Responders, our servicemen and women around the globe, and most especially the victims and their families of the recent shootings in Dayton, Ohio, and El Paso, Texas. Thank you. In accordance with Mass General Law, this meeting is being audiotaped and videotaped. If there is anyone else in the audience doing the same, please identify yourself. Seeing no one, we can continue. The next item on our agenda is public comments. Mr. Barnes, no one registered, okay? Number four, council comments. Anyone with comments this evening? We can move very quickly here then. Approval of minutes. First on the list is the July 2nd, 2019 open session minutes. Those are in your packets. If you have additions or corrections, please comment at this time. Hearing no additions or corrections, I'll entertain a motion to accept the open session minutes of July 2nd.
So moved, seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the July 2nd open session. Meeting minutes, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously, six-zero. Next are the July 2nd, 2019 executive session minutes. Those are also attached for your review if you haven't done that already. And again, if you have any questions or corrections, we'll entertain that. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept the executive session minutes of July 2nd.
So moved, seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the July 2nd executive session minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously. And third are July 24th, 2019 open session minutes. That was also attached for your review. If there are no corrections, I will entertain a motion to accept those minutes as well.
One abstention. So moved.
And I'll second it. Motion's been made and seconded to approve the July 24th open session minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. And finally, the July 24th, 2019 executive session minutes. Those are just, we just received those a few minutes ago from Attorney Maynard.
Madam President, I moved to table that until our August 10th meeting, so we have a chance to review those.
September 10th, I'm sorry.
September 10th, thank you.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded to table the July 24th minutes until our next scheduled meeting, which is Tuesday, September 10th. All those in favor, unless there's discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will set those aside. Please, it is rather lengthy, so please take the opportunity to review those prior to September 10th. Too many dates in my head. Okay, moving on to number six, communication, correspondence, and announcements. In your packet, we have a memo from our dispatch director, Mr. Scott Burns, simply notifying us that the redundant backup center for our dispatch center is changing from Long Meadow to the Wilberham Police Department. This is somewhat routine in the sense that, or the need to do this is routine. As Long Meadow, as you know, has joined a community agreement with the city of Chicopee to conduct dispatch, so their availability to do that for us no longer exists. So we have entered into an agreement with the town of Wilberham. And by redundancy, I'm speaking about the fact that the information housed in East Long Meadow pertaining to dispatch and the ability to field emergency calls is also in a backup format with the town of Wilberham in the event our system fails as well. Should the East Long Meadow Dispatch Center be overloaded in the sense of they can't continue to handle the amount of calls coming in, then the town of Wilberham will provide that neutral aid and backup. Also in your packet is a correspondence or communication from Sarah Minard regarding a townwide copier lease agreement. You will recall back in April or May, Ms. Minard came before us with the request to move from a routine three-year contract cycle for leasing equipment to a five-year, which allows vendors to provide a better price for communities. That said, what has occurred in July is a townwide copier lease contract, including the school department. Not reading from my memo, however, I guess I can. I can't remember how many machines are going to be part of this, but I can tell you, the bottom line is that in doing this in a bulk format, we, the town is saving $150,362.40 over the five years of the contract, which makes it a very attractive deal. So that deal was signed in early July, and I know the rollout has begun because I had to sidestep for copiers in the hallway at Town Hall yesterday. So I suspect that that will be in place for the start of the school year, especially for the school department.
Question?
Yes.
It says here, a reduction in duplicate machines or machines in close proximity. Do we know how many were cut?
Good question. I don't know that, but I do know that the formatting for how someone prints now instead of, and it's, again, it's the user habits, you know, most people like to have the printer right there. However, there's been some, my word, regionalizing, if you will, of, you know, offices. And I know the school department has done this for quite some time, where every teacher, I'll just use the school department because that I'm most familiar with. It used to be that every classroom had a printer, but over time, that's a lot of moving parts and cartridges for toner and ink. And so the more efficient trend in copier use is to put them in regional areas, if you will, and the technology is such that an individual, and I'm sure it's, will be the same in Town Hall and all of our other offices, can send a document with their four or five-digit code to the machine, and when they get there, they scan their barcode in and the product prints out.
Reason for my question is I'm not really sure the 150,000 is apples and apples. If there was, I don't know how many copiers there were before, but since there are now.
That, that I can't tell you, I truly can't.
That's a concern to me.
Is it fair to say, Tom, or maybe the girls know Mary or Janie? I think there were at least three of them in the hallway that were shrink-wrapped.
Right.
So.
Through the chair as well.
Yes.
I have a concern that the department head is not here to present this. We have a standing rule with the council that anybody presenting information to it should be here to answer questions, and the Director of Emergency Services is not. The same with Sarah Minard, Director of Municipal Finance.
Okay.
Signed. But I have a concern that they're not here to answer our questions.
Okay. As far as Mr. Burns goes, I, he asked, did he need to be present? Since this was already approved by Ms. Minard back in May, the changeover to Wilberham being the redundant community was already executed, he was simply passing that along because he didn't want there to be, in the transition, that that information wasn't made known. So I, in fact, said that since it was simply communication, that he did not need to be present for that.
Understand that one, but this copier, as Counselor Henry mentioned, is, and we have questions, I have questions too, but no one's here to answer.
Okay. It's listed as, you know, correspondence, but if you would like that on the agenda for September 10th, to discuss that with the finance director, I'm more than happy to do that.
I'm sure all the number of copiers are available, all broken out?
Mm-hmm.
All new? And it's just getting that, those numbers into your hands.
Would you prefer to do it that way? I can get those, you know, I'll speak with her tomorrow and make sure that we get that information.
Well, for myself?
To me, it's a sign, it's a done deal, it's signed.
Mm-hmm. Well, we did authorize that.
I'd like the information.
Yep.
But I don't think it raises.
All right, so I'll make sure that if there's any.
To the point of having to come here.
Okay.
No, but that's just the point I wanted to make, is that, you know, they should be here.
Fair enough.
Of course, unless there were issues, as President Hill mentioned, at least for the municipal agreement with Emergency Services.
Okay, I'll see that that information gets handed along. Number seven, public hearings. It's scheduled for 5:30 regarding the acceptance of Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 18, 185i, regarding the fortune teller's license. It's a first reading. Unfortunately, we have to wait till the appointed hour to do that, so I will entertain a motion to move out of order.
I'll make a motion to move out of order and proceed with item eight and continue with the agenda until 5:30, and then move back to the public hearing, item 7A, only to return back to the, what's remaining on the remaining part of our agenda.
Second.
All those in favor of what he said?
Aye.
Please say aye.
One motion stopped, one motion shot.
Okay, that said, we will move, be around item seven and go to orders of the day. We have an approval under licensing matters for a change of manager for Bentley's Bistro. And the new manager will be Alicia Willett. Thank you for being here. As you know, the ABCC requires that when a business changes managers, they are required to fill out paperwork for the commission as well as the community that the license is issued from, and so we have that this evening. It's somewhat routine in the sense that all the paperwork is in place, Janie? You have the packet in front of you? Does anyone have questions? Hearing none, then I will entertain that motion to approve a change of manager for MESs, Mess LLC, doing business as Bentley's Bistro, to Alicia Willett.
So moved, seconded.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are set, you are set, Ms. Willett, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Good luck. Also, a similar request for a change of manager for the Italian-American War Vets Sisto Lombardi Post to Mr. Glenn Case as well. Mr. Case is here, and you have that application in your packet. And all of that relevant information has been provided to the ABCC as well as to the town, and it is in order. So if you have no other, if you have no questions, we can move forward with that as well. That said, I'll entertain a motion to approve the change of manager for the ITAM's Sisto Lombardi Post to Mr. Glenn Case.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none. Congratulations. Thank you very much, good luck.
Thanks for coming.
Okay. Under financial matters, tonight, we have the approval of a capital purchase of trash carts for our residents, and we have with us Health Director Amy Petrowski to speak about this arrangement. Thank you, Amy, for coming here tonight.
Yeah, thanks for having me. This is getting to be a regular occurrence. So I'm here to ask for approval to purchase townwide trash barrels. We started enforcing the townwide trash limit of 35 gallons back, I think, in about November. Since after that transition, we heard a lot of feedback from our residents, as you guys did also, around residents feeling on that enforcement. One of the most, one of the feedbacks we heard most often was the request for standardized barrels like Springfield has. So we started looking into financial options for that, and DEP, because of our participation in the pay-as-you-throw program, offers communities the ability to apply for grants to pay for a portion of this, the barrels. So DEP has approved our application for, to pay for $30 of each barrel for our residents, which is why the proposal that came to you did not have detailed numbers, because it will depend on how many numbers are distributed. But that will come to a total cost to our revolving account of around $40,000 to $45,000. That includes the trash barrel, an RFID chip inside the trash barrel, as well as assembly and distribution. We are making plans for a way for our residents who choose to get rid of the barrels that they have. To be able to do that, we were able, through our partnership with Long Meadow, to get approval from the MRF to bring our bulky rigid plastics there, and, which is great because we don't have a bulky rigid plastic program at the moment, so.
Speak a little bit about the RFID chip.
Sure.
For all these tech geeks out there.
Yeah, so the RFID chip will be installed at the time of the barrel is being made, and it allows us to do two things that are really great. One, it allows us as a town to track our resources. So if people move across town, we'll be able to know where that barrel is by a scanner on it. The second thing it allows us to do is our hope is in fiscal year 2021 to have, use the rest of our revolving cash to buy a program that will allow us to track the hauler's movements. So when people call us to say, my trash isn't picked up, and everybody on my street had their trash picked up, we can look at real-time movements to see where that trash was. If it was rejected for a certain reason, there have buttons in the cab that will say overweight or too much yard waste, construction debris, and so we'll get a report of that in real time that says this trash wasn't picked up for this reason at this location. So our residents will have experienced less frustration. The trash will still be left at the curb, but they'll be able to get an answer right away as to why. And if the trash is missed, we're much, we'll be able to more easily communicate that with the hauler to go collect that trash.
To the chair?
Yes.
Regarding the distribution of the trash barrels, have we given any thought to how that's going to work? Is it going to go to a certain priority, a list of individuals who have asked or?
The delivery will be done, they allocate five days, they allocate six days, they expect it to be done in five. So our entire town should be done by the mid-October.
Of this year?
Correct. We wanted it to get done before the bad weather got here. The barrels that were selected have really great wheels for anybody who has some mobility issues to be able to easily get those to their curb.
Is the plastic sturdier than maybe a barrel, a 35-gallon barrel I might buy at a Home Depot or?
So we went through about four companies and looked at four different barrels. The company that we think we're going with is, was the sturdiest plastic of all the barrels. They're all pretty standard. What we liked about this barrel is it didn't narrow at the bottom. So once we do go to automated, it will be, there's less likelihood that things will get stuck at the bottom, because when you go home and you have all that stuff sitting there, it's never fun. So the barrel we chose is the wider of all of the options.
And it's still a 35-gallon?
35-gallon, yeah.
So the residents indeed do nothing. There's no need for residents to do anything.
No, there will be, once we figure out how we're going to do, if they want to turn back the barrels that they're using now, so we'll send out a question and answer. So everybody in town will get a Q and A about this, when it's going to be rolled out, what they can expect, and what we're going to do in terms of collection with suggestions on reuse. We're going to check with area landscapers to see if any of them are in the need for barrels to help reduce the traffic out at our transfer center. So they'll have all that information. If there's any questions, they can call my department, and we can help answer those. If there's special needs, if someone is concerned or they want us to bring it to their garage, we could certainly accommodate that with just a call to our department.
And again, for the benefit of our viewing audience, this new program, it has zero-dollar effect on our operating budget, which is probably the best news of all.
Correct, yes. So the funding that we have for this comes out of our revolving account, which is funded through recycling dividends, so rebates that we get for our residents recycling, the sale of those green bags that people buy in order to pay for the different trash programs we have in town, as well, there's one other source, and I'm blanking on it, but it all comes from different recycling programs throughout the town. None of it is assigned to us through the general fund.
As well as your hard work with the grant money.
Thank you. Return on investment.
Yes.
Through the chair.
Yes, of course.
Who owns the barrels?
The town.
The town of East Long Meadow owns the barrels. So when a barrel is broken, the town will send someone out to repair it?
What a great question. Right, so we've worked with our recycling coordinator. We've asked for, as part of the contract for the barrels, we've asked for a 1% overage on the two most commonly broken parts, which are the wheels and the lids. So they're giving those to us free of charge. DPW has agreed to store them there. When the wheels or barrels break, they're both very easy to replace, and our recycling coordinator with appointment will go out and just take care of those at the residence.
Another just what-if, and it just occurred to me, let's say I'm moving away from town, not moving across town, but I'm leaving. Do I leave the barrel for the people who buy my house?
Correct.
Or do I notify you that here's my barrel? Or I simply leave it for the next owner?
Right, so the barrel with the RFID tag is assigned to a specific address, not a specific owner, since it is a town asset.
Okay.
So you would leave that at transfer. We are buying 25 to 50 barrels overage, so if there is some mistake, people aren't waiting without a barrel. So we will be able to make sure all our residents have barrels when they need them.
Through the chair?
Sure.
Few questions? It looks like we're going to, it looks like the current trash hauler is going to use these barrels and manually tip them into the truck.
Yeah.
When that changes, and we may end up having them mechanical, would we still have the bags for overages?
Right, we would. Yep, that is part of the pay-as-you-throw program that will be, that is, yes, that's staying around.
But this barrel is built in such a way that when our trash contract is renewed, whomever the hauler is, will use a hydraulic arm and pick it up and put it in the truck?
So our trash hauling contract is up. We're starting discussions with the RFP, that's going to go up for that, and that will be a negotiating piece in whatever contract we have, whether the company has hydraulic trucks and they'd like to do the pay, the automatic arm, or if they'd like to continue to do it this way. I think our community's preference would be to have the automation, but, you know, that's part of the negotiating.
Excellent.
Another question. Are you currently thinking about having the residents bring their barrels to the transfer station?
Yeah, so the, the current idea is to bring them to the transfer station where there'll be a roll-off bin. The MRF has agreed to take them, they can only take one a day, so we'll alternate daily drop-offs with Long Meadow. One roll-off, not one bin.
Yes.
One thought for the previous barrels is what I, what we have done at our household for, you know, repurpose some of these barrels, is go to Town Hall, grab the big recycle, get the recycle sticker on it, and use that as even more encouraging. You know, I have like one barrel for trash, another barrel for paper, and another barrel for glass and plastics. And I use real, you know, real trash barrels with the sticker on it. Can we still continue to do that?
Yeah, we still have the stickers, and ideal, that would be the ideal solution to having an extra bin at your house, whether you use it for yard waste, recycling. There is unlimited recycling, so you could have three bins of paper products out there. You know, there is no limit. So ideally, that, it would be a reuse situation.
How does the process work? Do you just drop them off at the home?
Barrel?
Yes.
Correct, so there's, there's two contracts. One is for the barrel and RFID, and the other is for the assembly and distribution. So there'll be a loading area at our transfer station, which has been approved by our DPW director, where the assembly and distribution company will come, pick up. The parts are separate, the wheels don't go on until they get to the house because it's easier to transport them. So they just will have a bunch of barrels in the yard. The residents will know what day they're coming. We're thinking it's going to be on their regular trash pickup day, just for ease of everybody understanding what day they can be expecting it. They just go down the road, put on the wheels, and leave it at the residence with a tag that's, you know, with information.
Great, so they'll just be there.
Yes.
Sounds like you thought of everything.
We try.
We have a question from the audience we'd happen to entertain.
You said it's RFID.
Yeah.
So the driver's going to have to scan every barrel?
It will be automatic, so in our new contract, so if we do get that software in fiscal year 2021, the, we, the carts that have, the haulers have these readers automatically in them already. Some even have cameras, so they can see if there's any contaminated loads. So it will read it just by driving down the street. Yep.
And you said repairs.
Mm-hmm.
So what if the cart is beyond repair?
They, we have a warranty.
Is that a charge to the resident?
No. There's a, well, unless if it was deemed like you had a fire in your backyard, you dumped the ashes in there and you burnt the bottom.
Just natural use, I don't mean anything like that.
Yes, no, natural use, we're covered under warranty for 12 years. One of the reasons we're going with the company that we are is because they offered the longest warranty, which was a 12-year warranty.
Now, while I'm asking you a question on trash, what's your quality control testing for your bags?
We have gotten a new company.
Because your bags have been awful the last couple months.
We would holistically agree with you. Any bags that you purchase that have any defects in them, we'll replace, we'll even throw in a few extra. We're happy to drop them off at your house, or you can call us and we can have them ready for pickup. In terms of the new bags, we hired a new company out of Maine. Their bags should be shipping out, the contract started July 1st, they needed a year, a month to make the bags, and they should be shipping out, and all the retailers' new orders will go through the new company.
Will they be as wimpy as the ones we had?
The standard thickness of them is 1.5 mil. Unfortunately, because the bag company that we're going through oftentimes problems with the seams and of the drawstrings, they seem a lot more wimpier than a 1.5 mil would normally seem.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Amy?
Yeah, great job.
All good information, we like good stuffs.
So motion to?
Oh, yes.
Because they won't give me the money unless you make me appropriate.
Send me the money, so.
I'd like to move to approve a purchasing project for 35-gallon trash barrel with lid and RFID tags for all residents. Funding for this project to come from the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program, municipal grant, and the remainder from the town's Solid Waste Revolving Fund, number 2805.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously.
See you next time, right now.
Okay, yes, we'll be out there in a little bit. Nothing excites people or makes them angry like trash. Okay. Moving on to, we are just about at 5:30. It's probably best if we move back to the public hearing, so we will do that, and I'm just talking a little slowly till that clock ticks 5:30.
Does it click?
It's not a clicker. It's not a clicker, it's a battery clock, I believe. Hi, Neil.
I'm waiting for this official clock, too. Whichever beats it, whoever goes first. Whichever beats it, whoever goes first.
All right, that clock's first. It's close enough, it's five-thirty on that clock.
Okay.
This, uh, the reason for this public hearing is to read for the first time a new proposed general bylaw to address a local acceptance regarding a fortune teller's license in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter one forty, Section one eight five I. I, uh, first will introduce the members of the council from the left counselor's page, Anderson Hill, Kane, O'Connor, and Henry. Uh, the hearing will take this format. I will open the public meeting, the clerk will read the notice into the record. The applicant, uh, in this case, the council will read for a first time the new proposed general bylaw. The meeting again is being recorded, so anyone who wishes to speak on it must please come to the table so that you have access to the microphone. State your name and address, please. Uh, anyone wishing to speak, uh, is asked to be direct and address the chair only. After the public has had an opportunity to address the council, the public portion will be closed and the council will have an opportunity to discuss among themselves, uh, information pertinent to the proposed bylaw. And then we'll take the hope to continue the proposed bylaw for a second reading. That said, I will now open the public hearing. Mr. Florence, will you please read the legal notice into the record?
Yes. The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, August sixth, two thousand nineteen, at five-thirty PM in the school committee conference room at the East Long Meadow High School, located at three twenty-eighth Maple Street, for a first reading to address a proposed local acceptance of Mass General Law, Chapter one forty, Section one eighty-five I, regarding a fortune teller's license. Information related to this proposed bylaw is on file with the town clerk and available for review by the public. For the council, Thomas Florence, clerk of the council.
Thank you. Um, going forward now, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to make a public comment? This, uh, to establish the bylaw is, is more or less a formality, so...
We do need to read.
Yes, you're right. As soon as I said that, so we need to go back, so, um, I have to read the full verbiage of the, uh, Mass General Law, section...
May I, before we, we do the reading, I, I have a, a concern or amendment to it. Uh, in, in the current writing of this, uh, bylaw, it states, uh, about two-thirds of the way down in the paragraph, "By adoption of appropriate bylaws and ordinance to set such fees, the fee for each license granted under this section shall be two dollars."
But in no event, any such fee be greater than fifty?
Correct, but back on April ninth, the licensing committee recommended a fee of fifty dollars, which the town, which the town council voted on and approved, six oh.
That's right.
So, it's not two dollars, as it says in the bylaw.
Can I jump in? May I jump in?
Yes, yeah.
It's actually what we're doing is we're adopting a, uh, state statute.
Right.
So, that is what it says. And we can, in our adoption of it, say, it can't be less than two dollars, but no greater than fifty. And we've already adopted our own policy to be fifty dollars. So, we really kind of are boxed into what, if this is the latest version of Mass General Law, one forty, one fifty, one eighty-five I, we can't really make that change because we're, we'd be in effect modifying the acceptance of the state statute.
Counselor Anderson, I'm not sure if that's what it's, it says, or what, what the actual MGL says. But in this, in this bylaw, it clearly says, "The fee for each license granted in this section shall be two dollars." Not between two and fifty. And we already voted on a fee of fifty dollars back on April ninth, is to my point. I'm not sure how we fix that, but...
Is there any doubt that this is a fair reading of?
No.
The existing...
No, it's, uh, Ms. Attorney Mainer?
I, I don't have it in front of me, but my recollection is it says, "Unless otherwise voted on by the town council, it shall be two dollars, and that in any event shall not be greater than fifty dollars." So, uh, as council member Anderson stated, I think what's being asked is simply to have the town accept and adopt the state statute, and within those confines can, and in fact, this council already has, voted to set the fee at fifty dollars.
As long as we're not tied to the two dollars, that's, that's in this, that's fine.
And again, I'm certain, again, he was the local licensing authority.
I have that right.
He can amend, you have that right to amend after the acceptance of the general bylaw.
Okay, so going back to, uh, the proper reading of the statute, this again is Mass General Law, Chapter one forty, Section one eighty-five I. "No persons shall tell fortunes for money unless a license therefore has been issued by the local licensing authority. Said license shall be granted only to applicants who have resided continuously in the city or town in which the license is sought for at least twelve months immediately preceding the date of the application. No such license shall be transferred or assigned unless otherwise established in a town by town meeting action or in a city by city council action, and in a town with no town meeting by town council action by adoption of appropriate bylaws and ordinances to set such fees. The fee for each license granted under this section shall be two dollars, but in no event shall any such fee be greater than fifty dollars. Whoever tells fortunes for money unless licensed under this section shall be punished by a fine of not more than one hundred dollars." So, that is the actual wording of the proposed bylaw. Again, we are at that point in the, um, hearing where, uh, we'll see again if anyone has any comments to make or questions, that they're welcome to come to the table. Yes, sir? Please. We're good, how are you?
Good, good. Didn't tell y'all it's fortune. I just have a few questions. My name is Wes Crouch.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I'm part owner of The Wandering Spirit here in East Long Meadow.
Yes.
And, um, just kind of curious, um, as to the licenses, is this per reader or is it per establishment? Because we have up to forty, thirty, forty, fifty readers come in throughout the year. Um, and also, if we have a, a particular fair, we have ringing fifteen and twenty of them at a time. And they're from out of state, they're from all over the place.
Um, that is a question I would refer to our attorney here, Mr. Mainer.
And I don't have an immediate answer to that, I would have to look at that. My, my instinct is that it is, um, per establishment.
Okay.
But I will have to look at that.
Okay. Well, since this is only a first reading, we'll have that subsequent information.
Do they tell fortunes for money?
Well, define what you mean by fortune telling.
Oh, but is it money? See, because if it's not money, there's no issue.
Yeah, well...
If it's just a service that...
Yeah, first of all, it's for entertainment only, right?
Right.
Um, and so, secondly is, is, yes, people do provide money for services rendered, which could be any type of energetic work, intuitive work. Fortune telling is a kind of an archaic term, and it's not really used anymore. But, um, you know, it's, you know, tarot reading, oracle reading, different cards. You can, I can use this chair as a divination device and tell your fortune. It's simple as that, you know? Or, I don't even have to use a mechanism. I can sit there and energetically, because energy is infinite, right? Energy builds around the human body, goes out infinite. I can sit there and determine what's going on with you, if I have permission from herself. You don't need a mechanism to do that. You see, you see the difference there? So, that's why I think we need to understand, when you say fortune telling, what do you mean by that?
My initial response to that is, um, it's wording that is in the statute and that probably the statute has been around for some time and, um, it has, you know, the use of that label is probably more, uh, relevant to the, the year the statute was entered on to the, uh, books of the Commonwealth, but I don't know that for certain.
Yeah, okay. Um, another issue is, uh, establishment versus non-establishment. Does this extend to energy work? In other words, because during a hypnosis session or any other modalities of work, people are given advice, well, not advice, but they're seeking certain types of information if it's provided to the reader or provided to the practitioner, is partaking and given to the client. So, I guess the extent is, is are we saying that I'm sitting here and I'm just gonna divvy out some cards, and then I'm gonna read the cards, and that's fortune telling? Or is it, before I do a hypnotic session, I read the chakra fields and understand what's in the actual chakra fields to determine what the problem is before we go to root cause analysis on hypnosis? I mean, so there's a lot of...
I'm, I'm looking over your shoulder, Mr. Crouch, just...
Yeah, I, I just wanted to correct, uh, what I said about my instinct being that the license applies to an establishment. I think the statute refers to the license holder being a resident of the town for more than a year, which would suggest that...
But that was struck down.
Which, which suggests that it refers to an individual rather than to an establishment. And with respect to, you know, definitional issues, I think the, you know, uh, the fortune teller, quote unquote, would, uh, be conducting himself or herself at her own risk, uh, if they're conducting some activities that, that could fall within that definition. So, I think the burden is on, or maybe on the person accused or alleged to be telling fortunes to establish that they're not, uh, doing so.
So, another thing concerns me is if you go to the Mascoff site, which I'm sure he did, those residency requirements have been stripped, um, based on certain lawsuits. And that brings up one problem. Another problem is, is what are we gonna be doing if we have fairs and they're not residency of, you know, East Long Meadow and there's thousands of readers out there?
So, those are all good questions that we will have to pursue and get answers to prior to our second reading in September.
Okay, so what I'm concerned about is, is I, I respect everything we're doing here because this is part of the process. But, you know, I, I feel though, as a business, this could really cause some issues, especially when we're put at a competitive disadvantage when right down the road in infield, they can do this. Or right over Hampton, they can do this, or, you know, the place, they can do this. In East Long Meadow, all of a sudden, it's a problem. You know, so, I'm not sure that, you know, all over, of course, the statute says for entertainment only, then that's the, even in, um, Salem, they have that clause, which states that if someone comes in for entertainment purposes only, they're no longer following the statute. So, if you take a look at that bylaw they wrote, which is a really good one, I think it can give some guidance.
Salem, Massachusetts?
Yep, I mean, that's the Mecca of witches, right?
It is.
You know, so...
Try me just for a second?
Just, Wes, just to give you a little background on this, because, you know, obviously, we're, the town was not in that... Looking out specifically for fortune.
Oh, wait, wait, I'm sorry, we can't comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I will comment after.
I'm okay with free form. I know it's not...
We, we are bound by the protocol of public hearings. Are there any other comments you'd like to make at this time?
No, I think that covers it. It's just I'm, I'm really concerned about the, the, the long-term ramifications and also potential... There's a lot of pagans and a lot of people who wiccans who really embraces as a religion. Okay, and part of their ceremonial process is this. Okay, so, that, that's getting to a really fine line of how we want to handle this, um, as well. Um, because, you know, now I can see people say, "Oh, my God, they're gonna start burning this next." You know how that goes. Um, even though I haven't, don't think that at all, which has occurred in years, so don't take that the wrong way. But some people will. You know, start interpreting as they're starting to whittle away our rights to do certain things and, and worship in a certain way. Even though my personal self is non-judgmental, they can do what they need to do, wherever they need to do it. But, um, for that purposes, sometimes they will come in and perform those types of rituals, um, you know, especially on full moon rituals or equinox and certain things like that. And it has, um, not all of them do this, they all do them differently too, but they have, we have to be open to allow that to occur without seeing restrictions and things like that. So, I'm just hoping that, um, the wisdom of the board here, um, can see these things and, and see down the road of the ramifications that this may create, you know, because of, I have no idea how this came about, but... And also, look at the fact that when you looked at Worcester and other locations, I, you call them up and ask them how many licenses they've provided. It's miniscule. And, and you go to Worcester, there's probably about twenty, thirty thousand readers. You know, so, it's kind of like, you know...
Okay, all good information for us to, um, look, look at after this evening and be prepared with for the, uh, our second hearing.
Now, next to you guys get to comment and I get to respond, or how's that work?
The council can, uh, comment among itself. We, we can't engage in an ongoing back and forth dialogue in a public hearing.
Gotcha, okay, I appreciate that.
Okay.
No, thank you.
Anyone else, uh, in the audience like to comment? Yes, ma'am.
Gonna utter, uh, thirteen call can zav, East Long Meadow.
Mm-hmm.
And I know I've put you in a little bit of a difficult position, but I also know that I'm looking at wanting to maintain under Massachusetts law. And I do believe I did say that I, in the past, there are small towns that do do this and make it very easy. And I'm not sure that there's an issue with the town in need to enforce it, unless somebody was to complain. But I know for myself, I wanted to be covered so that the town didn't get the complaint or against me. And so, that's where I'm looking at, that I would like to see some kind of licensing, so I don't have to move to another town, and I'm not going to, but that type of idea.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hearing no other, um, requests for comment, or seeing no other, um, I'll close the public hearing. At this time, the council can discuss.
Through the chair, instead of closing the public hearing, I would recommend we just bring it back to the board.
Okay.
Because at the second reading, we should be able to open it to the public.
All right. I'm just looking at the protocol sheet.
Yep.
Any comments from the council at this point?
My, my take on it is, and I'm sure, uh, our, you know, town council, SCL, Kevin's gonna look into it, but I, I feeling there's gonna be a reasonable standard at the end of the day. Where, you know, I think what it, what this is for is probably something that was from, um, years and years ago, where they had opportunists, fortune tellers coming in and going through towns and so forth and, uh, running off with people's money without any type of background. And I think, well, this was a way to curtail it. So, I think people reading, I'm sure whether it's chakras and other type of, type of things would not, is my humble understanding, would not rise to the level of being a fortune teller. I think a fortune teller, the way I understand it, and again, I, I'm not pretending to be an expert on the subject, is somebody coming in for fee, for money, and saying, you know, asking an individual who purports to be a fortune teller to, to say what their future fortune is gonna be. I mean, I know we used to have people in town who were spiritualists, there was somebody named Angel Lady, there were some others, and I don't know if that rises to being a fortune teller. I think a fortune teller in the traditional ways, perhaps somebody goes to a carnival and comes in and asks money and then, you know, something else. So, I, I, I'm sure there's a history on this, and I'm sure it's been muted somewhat as far as residency requirements and so forth. So, I think perhaps by the second reading, we'll have some more answers.
Good.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Just curious, this, we're looking to adopt as a general bylaw to go into our general bylaws, but yet there's no location listed where it's gonna be placed in our general bylaws, Section six, Section eight, ten?
Mr. Florence has that answer.
Right, that's all in process. We're in the next step of the codification program and to the editorial analysis. And what we do is, when bylaws are approved like this, we send it to our bylaw, uh, committee E sixty code, and they will assign it a number. So, even though it's not, it doesn't have a section, a place to go, that will be taken care of once the bylaw is approved.
What happens if the codification doesn't get approved?
Well, I...
We should have a location, right now that says Section six point oh one, we're gonna put the fortune teller's license in, and as they... fortune teller's license in, and as they're redoing the codification, they take that and move it to wherever.
Assuming, you know, after the second hearing, we don't have any objections, that the motion to adopt this will be with that proviso, that if the codification is not approved, that it reverts back to the council for further discussion.
Well, we can get that information prior from the vendor to say where would something like this be placed.
Exactly.
Right. So we should have all those little details for the next move.
Through the chair, our bylaw subcommittee would be probably doing that.
Right.
Our bylaw subcommittee would be able to suggest where it should go under...
Correct.
Under current.
Under current.
Right.
Exactly.
And regardless, and then it's...
It goes where?
Then it goes wherever they say this.
By mutual agreement.
Yep.
Okay. So we are at the point where we need to continue this for a second hearing, and I'll entertain that motion.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for a second hearing to address proposed local acceptance of Mass General Law, Chapter 140, Section 185, a regarding a fortune teller's license to our September 10, 2018 council meeting at 6:30 PM at the Council on Aging building.
Correct. Motion's been made and seconded. Simultaneous?
Yes.
Discussion? Discussion.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is this potentially something that we should be thinking about as we do with the BYOB? We should have a no fortune teller policy, which is, we don't have a bylaw, and so everything is open, just like the BYOB, no, no official stance. And I just throw that out for us to think about in view of the concerns that are raised by some of the applicants.
The only comment through the chair that I would respond is, I know, was it Donna?
Mm-hmm.
Her comment is she just wants to make sure that what she does is legal in East Long Meadow. So if there's a way to do that and still afford her that protection and people like her, then I'd be open to that idea.
Of course.
I'm just trying to find a way to make that work.
Fair enough. Something else that can be discussed and looked at.
Yeah. Through the chair, also the comment made by our first speaker, there was a mention of the bylaw changing. Now, I have a concern over that because the bylaw we have in front of us certainly doesn't state that said license shall be granted only to applicants who have a society continuously in the city or town who wants the license. So I would imagine at some point that there's going to be some research to find out...
Mr. Maynard's going to look at that to see if pieces brought against it were, the parts of that were struck down by the courts.
Okay.
We have the motion on the floor. We haven't voted yet. All those in favor of continuing this to a second reading on September 10th, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we will move to a second hearing on the 10th of September and have all of that information that's been, those points of interest have been raised, we will have answers for that. Okay. So now we can continue with our agenda and we are back to item 8C, all business subcommittee appointments. I spoke about this at our last meeting and have since communicated with you by email to reach out and decide which subcommittees you'd like to be on. In our council rules, it, there is, under Rule 11, a statement saying that once the chair appoints, that those actions should be a matter of public information. So at the present time, the Financial Oversight Committee will consist of councilors O'Connor, Kane, and Henry, and residents Christine Songay and James Broderick. The Planning Matters Committee will consist of councilors Anderson, Page, Kane, I'm sorry, O'Connor. Let me start over because I'm just reading my notes here. Councilors Anderson, O'Connor, Page, and residents Sid Starks and Marilyn Richards. The Licensing Ad hoc Committee will consist of councilors Kane, O'Connor, and Mr. Henry, did you, did you say you had an interest in licensing?
I indicated that if there was a need for another counselor, I would be able to serve on that.
There is.
I don't have the background for that.
Councilors Kane, O'Connor, Henry, and residents Aldo Fazio and Kathy Hood. And our bylaw subcommittee is councilors O'Connor, Page, and Henry. And we are in the need for two residents to serve on that committee, so if anyone who's listening has an interest in doing so, would you please either contact me through the town clerk's office or by email? And that said, those are the appointments for our standing committees and our ad hoc committees thus far. Moving on to, back to new business, the determination to use approved voting machines per Mass General Law, Chapter 50, for Section 34. Late this afternoon, it came to Mr. Florence and my attention that two pieces in the procurement process are missing from this proposal, and so I will entertain a motion to table that until our September 10th. It's just, it's a procedural thing, it's just that we didn't have that in place at the present time.
So I'd like a motion to, under D1, to move that to September 10th, table that to September 10th, pending further information.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor of tabling this matter until the September 10th meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion passes unanimously. And our last remaining issue or matter to be discussed this evening under new business is a discussion regarding the appointment of an interim town manager. Again, for the record, our manager Denise Menard has elected to seek retirement that has been granted by the town council, and that retirement will take effect on August 15th, which is a short nine or 10 days away. By charter, by designing the charter, the council must appoint an acting town manager. That period of time can be for up to four months with a one-four-month extension if necessary. So we are at that point where we need to identify an individual who would be suitable to do that, to step into the manager's office, to fill that vacancy. And we briefly discussed this in executive session at our last meeting to say what would, what process would we take going forward, and it was agreed upon that the president and vice president would begin to investigate the potential for a qualified individual who could fill the bill for us, if you will. That said, we have had an opportunity through our own networks, and by that I mean, I've had conversations with adjoining communities, the highest elected official or individual from Town Hall in those communities, asking for input on if, if they knew of individuals who were in a position to fulfill a responsibility like this. Mr. Kane has done the same, and we have been able to successfully meet with two very credentialed and willing individuals who conceivably could become our acting town manager. Both candidates have a full background, an active background in municipal government, which would be a very nice transition for us. It's the pleasure of the committee to discuss both of those into candidates to this evening. And as I say that, I'm looking to Mr. Maynard, are we able to name the candidates that we're discussing, or is it more appropriate to identify them as candidate A and B for the present time?
Unless they have authorized you to disclose their names, I think you're better off, for the time being anyway, identifying them as candidate A and candidate B.
Okay. We did not ask that question to either. However, we, they both are aware that we were having an active and public discussion this evening, but I do want to err on the side of being proper in that. And so I have some resumes for you. Mr. Kane, did you send yours this way?
I did. We had four copies for Pat and Tom are sharing.
This one is candidate A, so it doesn't get confused, and I have the others right And again, in terms of transparency, I don't for a minute want our viewing audience to feel like we are being covert here. However, it is proper and traditional to publicly ask the candidates, this is candidate B, who may be at the discussion, up for a discussion, to release us and give us that permission. Since we hadn't done that officially, I want to protect their privacy for this evening. And if it's the council's pleasure to identify one of these this evening as someone who they'd like to give an offer to, an offer of employment, we will not, at the present time, speak about conditions of employment. Some of that needs to be done with Mr. Kane and myself and our finance director to understand some parameters about that. However, that said, you have candidate A and B in front of you. Both have indicated they are available and both have indicated that they're quite interested in, in an opportunity such as this that lies ahead here. They, they understand the parameters of our charter, that it would likely be a four-month duration with the potential to go longer, although we've made it clear that it wouldn't be the, I don't believe, and here I put words in your mouth, that I don't believe it would be the intent of the council to just drag our feet for eight months and then try to seat someone, that we realize we must conduct a professional search, probably would, like, definitely with a third-party agency to vet viable candidates for a permanent manager.
Through the chair, I'd just like to add something for clarification purposes. Once the press release was released and it became public knowledge that there was a separation agreement in force, both of these applicants approached us, these applicants were not solicited by any council member. So the resumes flowed in, the phone calls started, and that's how both these applicants had come forward. And I would add too, that the conversation, though we're not going to discuss the financial ramifications at this point in time, I will say that, that the applicants, our discussion with them was, this would be on a part-time basis at this point in time, and they seem to both be amenable to that scenario.
And we say part-time for two reasons. If we go over 20 hours, then we are compelled to offer benefits. And secondly, given the fact that over the last three years in the transition to the new government, our former manager Denise Menard took great care to fulfill the, the will of the charter, and we've, we have a full staff, we have a full staff of department heads, with the exception of one department where there is a vacancy, but we are filling that through a consultation contract. I would say that the day-to-day matters of the Town Hall are in order. There's a level of calm in Town Hall. Our department heads and employees are more than capable, and I made that comment publicly in an interview last week. So we also, so that said, in addition to we have to, you know, be careful around that 20-hour requirement that would trigger a full complement of benefits, we do believe that we, a person can effectively do this job on a part-time basis for the immediate Ms. O'Connor, would you like to...
Just a quick question. Are the applicants East Long Meadow residents?
Neither are, but both, they are in adjoining communities minutes, literally minutes away, given the, their addresses.
Okay, thank you.
And to that end, which I, we both feel is important, is they are very familiar with Massachusetts law and all of the various statutes that may be in play in the day-to-day business of the town.
Thank you.
Questions or thoughts from the council?
One, I would not be willing to vote on either one tonight. One of them I've just seen for the very first time, haven't had a chance to look through.
And I respect that because we didn't conclude this, our, our face-to-face with each of them individually till about 5 o'clock last evening, so I appreciate that.
Knowing, knowing that this could be an extended term for up to eight months, and I got to put it out there, should we open this up for a two-week period to accept applications and let the public know that, hey, there is this position that may be available, if you're interested, send them in? We may have people from within town that are interested in it. If this was something that we said was only for a three or four-week period, I would say you probably don't have to do that. But knowing it could be an extended, up to eight months, I think we should accept applications. Maybe, maybe schedule another council meeting for two weeks out so that not only can we do that, but then we can start discussing how we're going to go forwards looking for a town manager.
I just lost my train of thought. So, Mr. Anderson, you, you first.
Being in the hiring business for, in the private sector for all these years, candidate B's resume is unbelievably good, and I would not like to miss that opportunity. That is an absolute stellar, stellar resume. And just want to make sure we don't miss out on that opportunity because you don't see this level of background and specificity to exactly what we need come by every day. You know, so this is, and this is a history of service for many years and also understanding in multiple places the, what is necessary and being familiar with this type of short-term situation. It's a, it's blown away seeing a candidate of this stature.
Other, other comments?
Yes. Did, did no other candidates arise in your, you said you were doing some investigation, you and Mike were doing some, did you consider anyone else?
We did not. And no others arose out of those discussions that we, you know, I spoke with neighboring communities. We can certainly, I mean, we can engage right now the services of a third-party agency to give us names at a fair cost. We're going to be faced with that reality anyway to conduct a search for a permanent individual, but we did not. These just happened to be two local folks... These just happened to be two local folks who, through the media, realized that this is an opportunity and reached out to, actually, one reached out to me, one reached out to, that's just how it worked, to Mr. Kane.
So I would agree with Ralph.
Okay. From the floor, because this is such an important discussion, we'll entertain comments from the audience.
Jim Barth, Miss Guy Farm Drive. If all the town council members right now just saw the resumes for the first time, do you recognize any of these people? You do? Any affiliation? Can you talk a little bit about that, Don?
No, I just, it's a very recognizable name. And with a resume, like I said, that's pretty impressive. And this is a resume that goes back a few decades. And it's, so anyway, my position would be if we're going to make a decision, I would, I can't imagine a better candidate than candidate B. And I have no affiliation with this individual one way or the other. I'm just, this resume did hit our email stream this week, whereas candidate A, it just came to me moments ago. And I looked at it and I was like, whoa, this is pretty good. And I think if you heard the name, you'd be, you may be in agreement too.
Mary.
It's just an interim position, correct?
Yes.
So if, down the road, if you want to open it up to other people, that's possible. But I think right now to get an interim in place would be an awesome idea from my perspective.
Perspective of a town hall employee. Thank you. So I hear two councilors say that they would like to, did you say open it up or interview these two people?
Open it up. Find out if there are other applicants, particularly if there's anybody in town hall, for example, might be interested in understanding of this interim. But anybody else in town? I don't know. People on some of the committees?
My two cents on that is, I'm not opposed if that's the wish of the committee to open it up. But by the time we post, we're looking at more than two weeks in order to, and time-wise, posting with newspapers. I'm not, I'm not an advocate right now of appointing an individual within the town employee when we have before two very solid resumes with folks who have municipal government managing a town or a city. I would err on the side of going with someone who has that hands-on experience versus asking a sitting employee who, for argument purposes, may be a department head, to sit in the position and at the same time, really in effect, wearing two hats and struggling to keep his or her department afloat. I will also tell you that Mr. Kane and I met with the department heads last week to give a sense of, you know, it's business as usual. You are the players that keep the game going. And some, one of the department head members said, who wants it? And, you know, obviously, it was intended to be humorous, but most of them said, don't look my way. But that part, they were serious on. So, and to be fair, it was done in jest. And there was no poll taken to say who would be interested. Ms. Richards.
Just a quick question. If the council were to move forward and just look at these two resumes based on what Ms. O'Connor just said regarding wanting to get someone in place for the function of town hall, do these two candidates have a benefit to the final search? Can they interview? Or is it, are they going to not be considered in a future? I mean, I don't know if that's even been discussed, but would it be a benefit to them to be, you know, to be given the nod now? And then whereas other folks might not have that chance if you didn't open it up? I'm not sure I'm making myself clear, but I just want to know that would these two folks get preferential position for having been there first?
Historically, back in 2016, when we first became a government, the council appointed the then DPW superintendent to fill the role of acting manager. And also, you know, almost concurrently engaged the services of the Collins Center out of UMass to conduct the professional search. It found us two things. They were actually helping us in two ways. Find at least an acting town manager until we got footing and could go forward for a permanent town manager. Ms. Menard rose to the top and was appointed acting town manager with the permission from the council to, if she chose to, be a candidate for the permanent search. So we've had that history. It worked to our advantage. I don't see a disadvantage in allowing that again, but I don't think I'm answering your question.
No, I'm just wanting to clarify in my, so we're not, we have the possibility of an interim acting and then a final town manager.
We don't have to go that way.
Well, I mean, what are we looking to do right now? Is this acting?
This is acting interim, at this level can be used interchangeably, I think.
All right, all right. I wasn't sure if the town.
The first time, no, because it was all a startup.
Right, because we went through this.
Whomever the person is that gets appointed in the weeks ahead here will remain in place until the agency that we engage to help us find a field of candidates for a permanent manager is appointed.
Thank you.
Mr. Kane.
I was just going to say, yeah, there's no duration. It's not a minimum amount of time, it's a maximum amount of time. And just to look back, if everything was perfect, there would have been a succession plan. And we would have had somebody named if a crisis were to come up and there was a vacancy. But that wasn't the case. So we're looking for, we initially started our entire console here is who can we immediately put in place as a stopgap mechanism? Okay? Like I said, once the press release was released and it became public knowledge, we had two applicants come forward. Both these applicants, their resume may speak for themselves, but both of them have town manager, intern town manager experience. And, you know, through extensive years of working in that capacity. So myself and Kathy also spent a tremendous amount of time in town hall, as she stated, talking to people in town hall. And once the department heads knew that we had actually people that were looking at this with town manager experience, they kind of stepped back a little bit. And I want to say, I'm very pleased that anyone would have stepped into that capacity to help if needed. But when you, you know, as the level of experience kept rising and rising, they felt, we're in a safe spot here. You already have two candidates that would fit this bill very well. I would agree. I wouldn't want to be handed this document. I've had the luxury of having these documents in front of me a little bit longer. And when I say a little bit longer, maybe 12 hours longer than the other council members.
And to be fair, we've also had the benefit of an hour and 15-plus minute face-to-face with each one separately. And that was done informally over coffee.
I just want to finish.
Sure.
Oh, that's okay. The last point I wanted to make was that, so we're, you know, we're looking to put somebody in place, you know, the employees, our employees in town hall would like to see somebody, and, you know, we have a $60 million budget. Somebody should be named and controlled. And this could be for a very short duration. So picking one of these applicants or picking somebody else, depending on, I think what we should do is define how long are we actually going to go? Because I wouldn't want to drag my feet on this. But at the same token, I want you guys to have time to digest it or see if anyone else rises to the occasion. And let's make a decision because we want to get somebody in that position. And again, we're not bound, you know, we could, that person could be sitting in that position for as little as a month, depending on.
If you look back to, sorry to jump in. If you look back to our first search, we appointed our acting DPW individual to acting slash DPW superintendent in July. And Ms. Menard came on board as the acting manager on December, early December. So we were able to get all that done in about a four-month period. Because when we engaged the Collins Center, they had to spend time mocking up a profile of the town. So the first couple of weeks was more administrative than really candidate search. So I feel confident that we're pretty much, the calendars are matching up here, July to July or August. I feel confident that with a professional search underway, we should have a candidate in place sooner than later. And we've expressed to both of these individuals that it was not our intent to drag our feet and go well into next 2020 in the throes of, you know, the nets. We're going to be in the middle of a budget cycle again.
Madam President, do you and Councilor Kane have a preference?
I think that would be, I mean, that's basically tipping your hand. Who we want, and I think that'd be inappropriate. I think as the council members, we each have a say in it.
We did not get a chance to interview them.
And that's why I said I would.
That's right. So I was ready to say, to be fair, to be fair, I don't know if I want to say that publicly because that does prejudice. And again, when I say interview, it wasn't, we didn't have a list of questions like you might in a typical interview process. It was to get to know them, to give them a little bit of the landscape here in East Long Meadow, what our needs were, and to answer any questions they may have. It was not a session of grilling, but more or less, you know. And we made it very clear, it's informal. We're bringing this information back to our council. Ms. O'Connor.
I'm sorry, just one more.
Sure.
Both of the candidates, would they be available to be the permanent? Just if.
Yes to one, I'm not certain on the other.
Through the chair. Question about candidate A and B. The availability is not stated in here. Obviously, they both have commitments to date. But what type of release would they have and when would they be available to us?
They both expressed the statement that they would be available within 10 days.
If I could comment as well through the chair. Candidate B sent all of us an email. And in that email, the position candidate B is in right now is, the reason he's in that position has been satisfied on the 5th of August, which was yesterday. So he or she is now available to move forward in that position if we appoint that individual.
But so is candidate A.
No, what I'm saying is that candidate has, their resume says to present. Well, that present has just become the past as of yesterday. And that's in the email. It should be in our emails.
So again, I express some concern about, not opposed to asking if there was anyone in the public who might be interested. But I'm concerned that by the time we get it to the reminder, and we've already, we're past the classified date until next Thursday, which will be the 15th. And then we put that in there and say, you have two weeks to reach out to us. Now we're at the 30th of September. And both of these candidates do raise an interesting point. Are available, like I said, within 10 days. And we did not ask, are you looking for other opportunities? But I got the sense that at least one was. So that goes back to someone's point that we don't want to drag our feet too long on this. And I'm afraid putting it, if you want, putting it on the website can be done tomorrow morning, but does everyone in town look at the website? And again, I'm not opposed to a resident coming forward. But if that, if resident C, let's say, for A, B, and C, comes forward and he or she is retired or semi-retired and has a background in accounting and is willing to do the job, and I place that against the other two resumes that, who have deep backgrounds in municipal government and actually in doing the job of a town manager, where does that hold up? In my mind, I would still look at candidates A and B. But that doesn't mean someone out there in East Long, who lives in town. And again, it doesn't have to be right now, an individual in town. There's nothing in our charter that says an acting manager must live in town. Mr. Kane.
You're talking about East Long Meadow residents hearing about it. Well, the rumor mill of the entire town hall, odds are if there was anybody that was interested in the town of East Long Meadow would have already applied for it. And they would have applied for it two minutes after they found out that she was gone. So you've got two highly successful candidates there in front of you. And I worked for Department of Corrections in Connecticut. I did a lot of hiring. And procrastinating to put a manager in place was very detrimental to the employees that worked under them because it was always putting all the pressure on the employees to cover what that manager had to handle. And how do you want to say it? The, I can't think of it right now. The people's, the employees' attitudes were shot quickly. Yeah, morale, there you go. Thank you very much. Morale. Morale went down quickly. And that's, you know, that's state government. So you've got two nice candidates there that you guys, and we've hired all of you to take the best interest of this town. And every one of you have been awesome, and thank you very much for your service. And if you've got somebody that, interim is interim. You can keep looking.
Which is what we plan to do.
You can keep looking. Interim, I'd put somebody in right away. If you've got one that's outstanding.
To be fair, Mr. Kane and I, when we last had our meeting in July, I didn't expect to be in this position, that candidates with this type of background, two of them, never mind one, two, popped up. It's a good problem they have, Mr. Kane.
I was just going to make a recommendation that I wouldn't close the process for applicants, but I would move forward. And I think that the other council members deserve appropriate time to have these resumes in front of them, at least as long as we have, for 12 hours. But I'm not in favor of waiting for another council meeting and delay the process. So leave it open and see if anybody else, if any one of us or any one of you, you want to make some phone calls to anybody that you feel might be, you know, on the same level as both of these applicants, fine. But I think we should move forward with what we have in hand. But these guys, you know, the other council members need time to digest this. So I would hope that we could do something sooner than later.
Instead of waiting until next month, you could just be amongst yourselves a week from now.
We'd have to schedule a meeting formally. We can't do that informally.
Oh, you can't.
No, no, no.
I'm sorry, I'm not.
No, we'll be back in the news.
I don't know about other councilors' availability, but we could literally postpone a vote for a week and literally post a meeting for next Tuesday so that we have seven days to digest, make a decision, come back and make a vote on it. I don't know if.
Well, we just cut the time in half, so that makes me happy and it'll make the employees happy.
Yeah, plus I'm on vacation two weeks. I'd rather get it done next week too.
Tuesday the 13th.
I'm here next week.
All right.
I'll leave on Wednesday.
Yeah. So it sounds like just listening around the room, everybody's available for Tuesday the 13th, a week from today, at 6:00?
Yep.
Mr. Kane.
Just a last statement, and it's just about my latest adventure down at town hall. You want to remember, as high as it is right now, because I had to go up and change this manager position, and I had no clue what to do. change this manager position and I had no clue what to do. And Jeanne here was absolutely the bomb. She was the greatest. She took me through every step of the way, even typed out the thing for me. And I can't say enough good things about her, and I know you guys have always heard the negatives. So if you've got this kind of morale going in your town hall now, I'd keep it up.
And the lady right behind you would say the same, no?
You know, you have to keep that morale going to have this kind of service. I did not expect this, when I, I expected to come up here and have a headache. Because it started as a headache. So I figured getting to the town hall was just going to even further. But I was totally dumbfounded with the, the amount of enthusiasm and everything else. And you guys really have taken the town hall and changed it from back in the day when I used to go to the town hall and it was a headache. But, you know, this is one of the few times, you know, this, this thing for me was, it was a great adventure and I enjoyed every part of what this dealing was. And I wanted to thank you everybody and I want to make sure.
Well, thank you. And it's important for our employees as well as our residents to hear that. We, we focus a lot on the unfortunate news and not on sometimes the good things that fall by the wayside. So am I hearing that we will post a meeting for Tuesday the 13th at 6 o'clock, council and agent? And it is to discuss the appointment of one of these two individuals?
We got them invited, so.
Or anyone else.
Or anyone else.
Yeah, anybody else who wants to apply, but have, get us the resumes 48 hours before the meeting.
Absolutely.
And then invite them to speak before the council in open session if they want to discuss.
Are, are you saying you want public interviews or just a discussion amongst?
No, I think just if they want to come by and we can, we can talk with them as well as a whole.
At, at the meeting, okay.
Yeah, not just open meeting and, you know, not necessarily for public comment, but just for our comment.
Through the chair, that would be problematic.
That would be too late.
I agree.
All right, so.
Send the resume in.
They can come and listen.
If anyone's interested.
Okay, so it would be too late.
We want to make a decision.
We're only, that's right, you're only talking next Tuesday, yeah. So no.
Then we'd all be in a position of having the same thing with a new person again.
Honestly, like I said, these are solid candidates, but that one, B, is really spot-on point background.
Next Tuesday, meeting 6 p.m.
So we'll be back in session for the purpose.
We need a motion?
Yeah. Go ahead, Mr. Henry.
I move we postpone the decision on an interim manager to be excited next Tuesday, August 13th at the COA at 7:00, at 6:00 p.m.
Yep, our typical meeting time and place.
And that'll be the only agenda item barring emergencies, correct?
Correct.
I see.
The other agenda item could be the approval of those executive session minutes of 10 pages, just so that they're on the books.
That's fair, that's a fair point.
All those in favor of a meeting next Tuesday the 13th for the purpose of discussion and appointment of an acting town manager, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good. Moving forward.
Let me make one final question.
Yes.
Based on the email that we did receive from one, the one, one candidate, he or she did encourage us to call them. And there's no objection by president, vice president, and council if we decided to call each of the, any of these candidates. I mean, I'm telling you, it was, it's open invite.
I'm sure I would agree with that because that puts us, that could put a candidate at a disadvantage. I would ask that, let me back up and say that yesterday, when Mr. Kane and I met with each of them, we agreed before the first chat that if we felt either one was a no-go, we were not handing it to you today. So I, you know, I'd like you to understand that both of these are solid individuals who are capable. As I said before, they are not East Long Meadow residents, but they are so close that you could just almost move the border. Visualize a map in your head and draw your own conclusions, but, and they are both, so being that close and being individuals such as they are who keep up with the news, they understand the landscape of East Long Meadow, above and beyond the need for search. They're very familiar with the comings and goings of the East Long Meadow community, so. But I, I think I would back away from phone conversations and interviews. I don't think that keeps the playing field level.
I just want to add, this is an intern position only, so residency wouldn't play a factor at this point in time. And under, under the charter, the guidelines of an intern position is limited, limited power by the town manager. So we, we don't know how long they'd be here. We do know that one of them would at least have aspirations of moving forward if the opportunity became available for a full-time position. And at that point in time, the residency question and the economics of everything would come into play.
Okay, so moving forward then, we are at summary items, action items for next meeting.
Port of order, you didn't take a vote on the outstanding motion.
Which was? To.
Conduct a meeting a week from today.
Oh, I thought we did.
It's second.
I got it.
The motion came from Pat, the second it came from Tom O'Connor, and I think.
Do we vote, Jeanne? No?
I thought you did.
Well, let's vote again.
All right. All those in favor of meeting on Sep.,
August 13th.
August 13th at 6:00 p.m.
Council of Aging.
Council of, on Council of Aging. Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So we'll be back in session then. And so under summary for action items, we will be looking at resumes as well as please review those executive session minutes and.
Make a motion to adjourn?
No, before you do that, with respect to the signed, with this, respect to the agreements, the executive session minutes, the indication I got here, there's no signatures on this, so I'm not really.
On what? The agreement that has been duly signed by both parties as of last Tuesday?
So I would, I would think perhaps.
It was attached to the minutes in unsigned form because that's how it was presented to the council on that date.
So we really don't know what the execution date is. We're proving minutes that we don't have.
The execution date was last Tuesday.
Right. The minutes reflected the approval of the agreement back then. It wasn't executed at the time of that meeting.
So will we at some point receive a signed agreement?
Yes, it's already on.
Sure.
With dollar, with dollar amounts in it as well.
Sure.
I missed that meeting, it could not be here, and so I'm really at C as to what we signed.
We didn't have that date, so it couldn't have been part of that, those minutes anyway at that point in time, so. Yeah. Did I hear adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.